Today is Tuesday. The March the first. And the time is nine oh four. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Mr. Kenyon and myself are present. Mr. Davidson is absent. We've got a room full and we'd like to, for the record, have your introduction. Starting over here, introduce yourself.
Bob Batista, Expo Idaho.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Linda Rosa Winkle, Paramedics.
Cheryl Roberts, Trash Billing.
Mike Warke, Operations.
Adam Adam, Procurement.
Robin Swayman, Procurement.
Noah Hill, Procurement.
Brian Gilbert, Development Services.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Jessica Donald, HR.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
IT Guy.
Phil McRae, Clerk.
Bob McQuade, Assistant.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Beth Mon, Treasure.
Well, thank you. Now that we have the record complete, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are none.
Okay, we have six resolutions up to start out with. I will open the public hearing for Resolution two seven two nine. Resolution for procurement of grounds maintenance on the open market for operations. Do we have any? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is a resolution to procure grounds maintenance services on the open market. We had previously went out for a bid, only received one response, and that response was over budget. So we're requesting the Board to go out and see if we can find a better deal on the open market.
Okay, do we have any other testimony on Resolution number two seven two nine?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think that one of the things we're looking at doing is maybe splitting it up into two separate contracts as well. We're still looking at doing that.
Mike, are we still looking at doing something like that?
Well, that would be part of the conversation.
That would be part of the open market discussion.
To make it easier, some of these companies are too small.
All right.
Sounds good.
If there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution number two seven two nine. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution two seven two nine as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. In favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will open the public hearing on Resolution number two seven three zero. Resolution for sole source contract.
I want you to read that, though.
I'm not going to.
It's a resolution for sole source contract for H2+ iron sponge media replacement material for MV Technologies LLC hydrogen sulfide scrubber at the landfill.
Well, hey, now that we have that out of the way.
I think it's for, shouldn't that be for FY twenty twenty-two instead of twenty twenty-one?
It should be.
So we'll go ahead and make that correction to the record.
Well, I can break the resolution too.
Better late than never.
Yeah, at least that resolution is correct. Okay. Does anyone here wants to speak to that? To the, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Frank.
This is a media sponge for the landfill scrubber units out there. And we have to, the landfill needs to replace these every so often, and so this is their request. We can only get it from one place, and that's MV Technologies. They're the ones that made the scrubber units. They're the ones that has the media to replace.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else wants to speak to that? Anybody on the bridge wants to speak to it? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing on Resolution number two seven three zero.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to move to approve Resolution two seven three zero. It's listed on the agenda and amend the date to read twenty twenty-two.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing on Resolution number two seven three one. Resolution for sole source procurement of insecticide products from Clark Mosquito Control.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, we have Adam Schroeder up on the line with us, and he could probably better speak to this. We have actually three resolutions for, oh, excuse me, two resolutions for sole source products. And Adam can talk a little bit more in depth about why we're doing sole source on these.
Okay? Adam, you got the bridge.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon. Yes, these resolutions are for products that have become distributed by a single distributor, I guess. So a lot of our pesticide products have kind of conglomerated into single distributors, or as far as available through single distributors. And so that's what these two sole source resolutions are for, so that we can buy a plethora of products from these two manufacturers.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on Resolution number two seven three one? Not, I will close the public hearing on Resolution number two seven three one.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution two seven three one as listed on the agenda.
Second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution two seven three two. Resolution for sole source purchase of insecticide products from Adaptico.
Same thing.
Same thing. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on Resolution two seven three two.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution number two seven three two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
I will now open the public hearing on Resolution two seven three three. Resolution for destruction of certain weed, pest, and mosquito records. Any discussion? You don't like them anymore?
Mr. Chairman, we have a bunch of records that have been kept for a long, long time, and certainly we don't need them anymore. So. Permission to get rid of some of those, please. And thank you.
Do we have any other, anybody else that wants to speak on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution two seven three three.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution two seven three three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution two seven three four. Resolution for the destruction of certain emergency management records. Do we have anyone to speak to that?
I think that would be Joe. It's Joe's records, right? He's not here.
He's not here?
Sure, it's the same thing. They're old, and we don't need to keep them by statute any longer.
He's getting tired of them. Okay. I will close the public hearing on Resolution two seven three four.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution two seven three four as listed on the agenda.
Second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, we went through those six fairly rapidly, didn't we? Okay. We have, next on the agenda is ordinance number nine three five. Amending Ada County Code to adopt mass timber construction requirements.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon. Ordinance nine three five is a proposed amendment to the county's building code. Historically, the.
Hold on, sir. Excuse me, we need to open the public hearing on ordinance number nine three five.
Yes, again.
Public hearing's open.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Historically, the state of Idaho has updated the building codes that are applicable in the state about every three years or so. And last year, we, in accordance with state law, updated our building code under nine, ordinance nine nineteen, to incorporate some significant changes made by the state. And in the interim, essentially, in between typical code adoption cycles, the state decided to opt to adopt some additional building code standards that relate to mass timber construction. And this ordinance will essentially bring us into compliance with those newly adopted standards. The ordinance also will address an omission associated with the amendments that we made last year. While Idaho, or I should say, the state of Idaho updated the minimum wind speed design standards to one hundred and fifteen miles per hour. The table in our ordinance lifted it ninety miles per hour. So the last section of the proposal will address that omission and, again, bring us into compliance with the minimum standards and.
Have we ever had a hundred and fifty mile an hour winds?
I hope not. None that I can recall, but, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any other questions. We're also joined by our building official, Brian Gilbert, who could address any technical questions you have about the ordinance.
Is that going to require a different type of construction to meet that standard? Because that's, that's a huge increase. No, it won't.
No.
They already meet the hundred and fifteen miles an hour.
I would say yes.
Okay.
It's just to keep us in line with the currently adopted codes of what the two thousand eight, when that wind speed went up according to ICC from ninety to one fifteen. Those are worst case scenario, and it's based on a three-second wind gust. So likely, we wouldn't see a one fifteen. But it doesn't increase the building costs or, as far as, we haven't had any negative feedback according to that, as far as I know.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance number nine three five. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sounds like we're just going to get in line with what the state's changes are. So I'll go ahead and move to approve the ordinance nine three five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay. We have proclamation this morning. I'll read the proclamation for the record. The Board of Ada Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho proclamation to designate the month of March two thousand twenty-two as procurement month. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas procurement professionals, through their combined procurement power, spend billions of dollars every year and have a significant influence upon economic conditions throughout the world, and whereas governmental procurement professionals contribute positively to public agencies and service by improving procurement methods and practices and by utilizing new technologies to increase efficiency and improve processes, and whereas Ada County procurement, the Idaho Public Purchasing Association, and other public professional procurement associations throughout the world engage in special efforts during the month of March to inform the public about the importance of the role played by the procurement professionals in business, industry, and government. And whereas the staff of Ada County procurement do an exemplary job of evaluating the process under which fair and competitive bidding occurs, and whereas training, networking, certification, and continuing education of the procurement staff ensure that the public is well-served with a process of fairness in all aspects. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby recognize public procurement for its impact on government purchasing in Idaho and proclaim March two thousand twenty-two in Ada County as procurement month.
How many times did you say procurement?
I quit keeping track.
Forgot the PPD.
Where's that big trophy you got?
It's downstairs.
It's going to be on our newsletter too.
On the newsletter, yeah.
So make sure and stay tuned. And that's coming up when, Elizabeth?
Today.
Today.
So the picture's in there, and you can see the big trophy.
Good.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Heavy trophy.
We'll pay you for that, Commissioners.
We have to have a motion first.
We have a whole month.
Yeah, yeah. May I have a motion on the proclamation?
I will move absolutely to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda and designate March twenty twenty-two as procurement month.
I'll second the motion. Do we have any discussion?
I would just say that thank you for the recognition. Really, it's a recognition for my staff, and they're all mostly here with me today. And I just really wanted to congratulate them on everything they've done. And this is really a celebration of the procurement staff and all the hard work that they do.
Great. Good job.
All right, good job, yeah.
Good job winning the award. Did you guys want another picture today with the proclamation?
Sure.
I think that's why Jessica's here, right? Jessica's here anxiously waiting. Snap some picture.
Do you need to vote to approve it first?
Oh, yeah.
Let's take a vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
All right. We'll snap, we'll snap a photo. Where do you think you're going?
This way.
By the flags.
Okay. Here's your proclamation. Congratulations. Proclamation month.
God, everybody does.
Picture Jessica.
All right, smile. Do a couple so I don't get your eyes closed, since I'm pretty good at that. One more.
All right. There you are. Thank you.
Congratulations again. You guys are just making the news and putting your faces out there.
Yeah. You're up again here.
Yes, indeed.
Moving on to procurement and the opening of RFP two two zero three four.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, today being under a new business is our opening of RFP two two zero three four, the Ada County Custodial Services for Select Ada County Facilities, two thousand twenty-two. And we received two proposals for this project. Evan has our Bonfire E-Procurement System queued up. If you're ready for us to open, we'll proceed.
Okay.
Just two.
Just two. Okay. Bonfires up a little slow up there. But we have the two proposers up there, and if you'd like, I'd read them into the record. Yes, please. Our first proposer is KBS. Our second proposer is Vanguard Cleaning Systems. And since this is an RFP, we're going to be looking at a lot of different evaluation criteria beyond price. So that's, that's it for today as far as the opening goes.
What's the date that you would like to table this to?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the evaluation team will need a little time to evaluate these two proposals, and we would request that this be tabled to the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two open business meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to table the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP two two zero three four Ada County Custodial Services for Select Ada County Facilities, two thousand twenty-two to March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Carries.
I do have one quick question. Do we, are we currently doing business with either one of those?
I believe one of them we are for sure. Is it Vanguard?
Yes, Commissioner Kenyon, Mr. Chairman, we are doing business with both of those. KBS is currently doing the courthouse bases in juvenile Denton, and Vanguard is currently doing barrister, and they are the temporary service we have.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Which is what this contract is for.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
It was the Bob show this morning.
Oh, yeah. Moving on, we have an application for a peddler's license. Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the peddler solicitor license as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll now entertain a motion on the remaining licenses.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, one new license, and two license transfers and authorize the Chair to sign documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We have with us our distinguished county clerk, Mr. Phil McRae. He's got some good news for us, I'm sure.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon. I think you're well aware, we're in the thick of it now with the primary election coming up. Filing began yesterday, and we had at least three people in the lobby at eight AM ready to file their paperwork yesterday morning.
Really?
So it's.
Anxious.
Anxious, off and going. I was talking with Assessor McQuade. We're kind of working out the kinks in terms of making sure to get our website updated with who's filing. So we'll have that up here this morning in terms of those filings from yesterday. But I'm going to be talking with the elections team to see if we can, it's a, we have this tug and pull. We've had issues in the past. We're making sure we've verified that a candidate is qualified, run for the office, that we have their information correct. And so we're trying to vet all of that before we make it public, because obviously, once you do that, it sets a lot of things in motion. And so we're just working through that. The biggest thing for us, you know, we have the county offices that are up, but the big thing is the precinct committee. And there's just, there truly are hundreds of them for each political party. So it just takes a ton. And that's often where a lot of people are watching the most closely.
Well, we created a lot of that extra work.
We did create a lot of that extra work.
Forty-five, forty-six new precincts?
Yes, we shot ourselves in the foot when it came to that part. It was a good decision to make sure things work well at the polls, but it will add some additional work at this phase. And we're verifying, you know, we have to verify residents where they are. We're verifying the notaries who've signed them, other things that come in. And so we'll be working to get that underway. A lot of the effort, though, really is, I updated last week, is on getting the details. The, yep, all the geographic information updated in the system. Saul and I spoke on Sunday, and they made great strides over the weekend working with Ten X. And so I believe we're close within, either today or tomorrow, we might have into production most of our stuff. We'll still have some cleanup, which is a huge win, because the last report I had a week ago was, the pace it was uploading was seventy-five days out. So thankfully, they got some extra power behind it. And we're looking at other counties. We're likely Ada County is going to need to assist some of the other counties in getting their updates done. So we'll be chatting with them once we've successfully gotten our own information. So, you know, my goal has been in our office is going to have that updated by the end of candidate filing, because we know lots of candidates are anxious for that information. So we're working to do that right now. But it's interesting, because even the Secretary of State's office can't verify legislative candidates through the database. They have to use maps to do it. And so everyone's kind of a little bit behind the curve.
Do they do that verification, Secretary of State's?
They do now. I don't know if you recall.
They didn't always do it.
They've had a few issues. Couple of years ago, there's at least two candidates got removed from the ballot because the Secretary of State's office failed to verify their qualifications. I think they've learned a few lessons from that.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
Do you have any other good information for us?
I think that's it for the time being.
Okay. Well.
Thank you for.
Well, thank you.
Your willingness to help other smaller communities, towns.
It's all hands on deck to make this come together.
That's nice.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I think the other counties appreciate it, too. Yes, they do. They should, anyway. I think they do. All right. Next up will be the Claims Journal. All in entertaining motion on the Claims Journal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion and authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Personnel Action. Ten-step increases, twelve market adjustments, and two performance increases. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the Personal Actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain unfiled in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have our distinguished assessor, Mr. Bob McQuade. And you don't have any, any tax cancellations?
The Chairman, I was surprised.
Is this really the end?
That's why they're sitting in the heartbeat.
You've got some in your pocket, I'm sure.
Really good news for you. Glad our treasure is sealed. We have no tax cancellations today.
It's a first in.
A long time.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they're all done and done?
Yes. For today.
All right. For today. Well, do you have, give us a report. Do you have any, any good news for us?
We have about fourteen hundred PTRs submitted already, Probably Tax Reduction. And that's out of about five thousand that we had last year. So they're coming in very quickly, and the staff is processing these at an amazing pace. Usually, we start to get behind with PTRs and homestead exemptions at this point in time, but they're able to keep up with everything.
Right. Are you seeing for this time of year compared to last time of year that there's an increase in the PTRs?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I'm not aware of anything, and my guess is it's probably about the same as it has been in the past. You know, we have four thousand PTRs. Uh, you know, we have four thousand PTRs, um, circuit breakers. For twenty-five years, it was just very quiescent. Uh, but a couple of years ago, uh, in, when veterans were allowed to participate in this, and, uh...
And we put your face on the bus.
Yes, yes.
Advertising it, that helped.
But, and, and I was just going to say, yes, uh, we really made a, an effort to, to make people more aware of it, and that was very successful. So, yeah.
There's been some legislation proposing changing that a little bit. Is that gonna be effective for this year?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, yes, I, I believe it would be for this year, and it's what it is. It was, uh, I think it was last year, the legislature passed a law that, uh, if you, if your residence was a hundred twenty-five percent of the median, you did not qualify for PTR. Uh, the only property tax relief you would get would be to put your home in to, uh, the deferment program. That's where the taxes would be deferred, and there'd be interest accumulated. And then, at the time that the property would be sold, the taxes would be paid at that time. There are two bills, uh, right now that just, I haven't seen much movement yet, uh, changing that, where, uh, one would be up to three hundred thousand dollars, I believe it is. And then, uh, the other bill is two hundred percent of the median income. I believe it's those, the two bills that are out there right now to, um, to qualify for PTR.
You mean the maximum value is three hundred thousand?
Uh, that's what it would be, this, this one bill, yes. Yes. The other bill would be two hundred percent of the median, uh, and median sales price.
That's a lot different, isn't it?
Uh, yes, you are, but they're both, they really offer relief, and, um, nothing is, something is better than nothing in this case. It's, we figured, uh, at the a hundred twenty-five percent, I believe it is about two hundred and twenty-five people who were eligible for PTR last year will not be eligible this year.
Because of the changes
Yes.
That the legislation, legislatures made?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Is the association actively supporting either bill or, or not supporting?
Oh, no, we would be supporting either one. Both bills have just been printed, and that's where we are at this point in time. But, no, we support either one.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bob.
That was news from the assessor's office.
Okay, we have our distinguished, uh, treasurer with us, Mr. Beth Bond. Would you like to give us a good report?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. I, I was also pleased and surprised to not see any tax cancellations. I would just note that there are over two hundred approved cancellations still being processed by our office. So, we have two staff members, and half their time or more is devoted to completing these. Uh, and that will continue through March, um, at the current volume that we have backlog. So, it's a priority. It's just they're very manually intensive. Um, so we will continue to work through those.
With the same level of staffing that you've always had, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's
Exactly. So, we've taken two people off other projects, so half time just to work on these. So, um, it does present a, a staffing challenge. And even if legislation were to change, um, any proration, it's not gonna change the quantity that's gonna come to our office, so.
Well, it will, it will, if, if that legislation passes and becomes law, it will change the calculations.
Exactly.
So, it could take a little more time because of the calculated. Instead of just the whole year, it'll be half a year, three quarters of a year. Because I think that's what the legislature does, isn't it, is prorate based on the time?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It would be, uh, prorated on a quarterly basis.
Quarterly basis, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I guess that's something, too.
Yeah.
When we had the, first had the discussion about, and this is, goes back probably seven or eight years ago, removing the April fifteenth deadline on the homestead exemption. No one had any factual information, but we just, we and some people from the Board of Realtors kind of figured maybe two hundred and fifty, five hundred, or something like that. And what is it, being close to two thousand? So, no one had the, uh, the, the scale in mind of what this was going to be like.
Including the adult legislature.
That's correct.
Or in particular.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sounds like you need to address some short staffing shortages this time of year.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else? Uh, thank you.
Yeah, I would just also note that, um, just a comment regarding the county's investment portfolio. As, I'm, I'm sure you're aware with the situation with Russia and Ukraine. There's heightened volatility in the markets, um, and additional uncertainty with the markets. And our approach, as you're aware, throughout the pandemic and now throughout this crisis, has been just to have a consistent, disciplined approach focused on safety and liquidity. Um, that's been our approach. We've been in consistent communications with our advisor, um, who you meet with quarterly. Spoke with them this week, and they've affirmed that approach. Despite all this uncertainty, stay the course, we'll continue to work with them, but just want to make you aware, we are watching that and how it might affect us.
Aren't we working on an MOU with the state treasurer?
Sure, that, that is correct. Um, we'll be working with the state treasurer to see, um, how we might change some of the allocation of our portfolio in collaboration with them.
Good, good. All right. Well, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah. Okay, moving on, we have, uh, Sharon Roberts here with us. We have some, uh, trash suspensions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we have researched all four of these applications in front of you for consideration and verify that there are no homeowners' exemptions in place. Um, the common theme that you'll see among these, and I think some of the ones I presented last week, is a lot of these properties, uh, with old existing structures are being purchased for development, um, or remodeling investments. So, um, I feel comfortable having you approve these for a one-year suspension. And then, if, uh, the situation changes one year from now, they can present another application.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the trash suspension requests as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Sharon. Okay, uh, weed and pest has a, has a lien to place and a lien to release. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to move to approve one notice of lien and one release of lien for weed and pest as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have some interim agreements at Expo Idaho. A flea market, two flea markets. Comic-Con coming?
But this weekend is the big one, right?
This weekend is the Sportsman Show. Um, it's one of our better shows, and people come from all over, because Idaho's about recreating and outdoors. So, it's a great show for us. We look forward to always having that this year.
We do a lot of advertising. Should be a good, good turnout.
That's in, including, is it all inside the Sportsman?
It is all inside. They have a little fishing pond in our fountain out there. The kids can come out there and cast a line in and catch a small trout or something, just to keep, uh, the interest going of how much, uh, recreation and outdoors is important to us.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, we have a motion on the interim events for Expo Idaho.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move to approve the six interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have a, one event, uh, to be discussed on the Barber Park Event Center. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the one Barber Park Education Event Center Agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second that motion. Uh, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now take up the agreements on the agenda. Is there any discussion or any, uh, uh, anything we need to discuss on these agreements?
Mr. Chair, um, just a quick question. So, the agreement with E-Tix, that's the same company we've been using, right?
Yeah, there were some pages that were missing, so we had to get them back in here. So, we're, we're, we're all good now.
Okay. And then, the North Boise Little League, um, that's the same use, right? And they come and, they come and do most of that.
Lady Bird Park, they come out there and they play softball in Little League and everything. And so, it's one of the really good uses we have of Lady Bird Park.
And they do their, their own maintenance on it, right?
Yeah, we, we mow it, we water it. Um, it's up to them to take care of the infields and the dugouts and so forth, and provide some, some porta potties for, for use out there, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Super.
We've been doing this for quite, quite a few years. It's a good program.
It is.
They clean up the trash.
They do.
Yeah, all right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna go ahead then and make a motion to approve the four agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Unless there's objection, we'll be in recess.
No, not yet, not yet.
We're not?
No, everybody, it's Women's History Month.
Oh, yeah.
Starting this, starting today, Women's History Month. So, uh, we'll be looking at, uh, women making history the entire month, and we have an event coming out. Um, Elizabeth is sending out a notice today, the first one, on March fourteenth. Mark your
Monday, March fourteenth.
Yep, Monday, March fourteenth. Mark your calendars. We're gonna have Red Shoe Day. And we'll have a story. Beth and I went to visit, uh, Treasurer Julie Ellsworth over in her conference room, talking about our investments. And we noticed and stunned by this photo, black and white photo on the wall of these women. Um, but they were wearing really bright, beautiful red shoes. And so, Julie went into this whole story about empowerment and, uh, how she's related to young women coming into the office and, and just that these red shoes have struck up some amazing conversations. So, she's agreed to come over with us and present, uh, women making history here at Ada County. And we have quite a few, um, women that have made history and are making history right now as we speak. So, mark your calendars, March fourteenth. Uh, wear your red shoes. If you don't have red shoes, you can wear as a, as a red, red socks will suffice, red socks. And we're gonna get a big picture down at noon, um, in the lobby down there. So, you'll see some notices go out, but wanted to give you all a heads up so you can get it on your, on your calendar. So, it'll be a really fun month, and I think, um, I'm out next week, but we'll get a, a proclamation, um, for Women's History Month for Ada County's ready to go for next Tuesday and have Commissioner Beck read that into the, into the record. Be great.
I might add, that picture that you, that you saw, uh, commit, the, the treasurer sent that out as her Christmas card.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's great. And it's in juxtaposition with the original photo, black and white photo that was taken of the three, uh, men who ran that office. And they're, the women are sitting in the exact same chairs, exact same positions. And it takes a while. You stare at it, and you're like, what's going on here?
Then you notice red slippers.
Yeah, so we're gonna have the pictures over here and wear red shoes. Wear red shoes the whole month, if you want.
Proper notice has been served.
That's right.
And we will have a proclamation ready to go. Okay.
That'd be great.
Well, unless there's any further objections, we will be in recess. Thank you. Okay, well, good morning. Today is, uh, Tuesday, March first. The time is ten forty-two. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct this weekly Open Business Meeting. Uh, Commissioner Kenyon and I are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Also with us, introduce yourself.
I'm Linda Rosenwinkle, billing manager for EMS.
Sean Rain, uh, chief of the EMS.
Phil McGrane, clerk.
An IT guy. Okay, Matt Clerk, are there changes to the, uh, to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have, uh, first up, we have the Claims Journal. May I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We have, uh, personnel items up. I'll accept a motion on the personnel items.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the personnel, uh, action items listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have four agreements on the agenda. Is there any discussion on the agreements? Would you like
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, good morning. Uh, the first three agreements are actually related to a program, uh, that is called OD MAPS. And so, it's a, a national program. The, uh, the company actually, uh, procured a grant to be able to, to pay for the, uh, API and the work to be done with the SO. But what it does is it gives, gives us, uh, some insight into where our ODs, our overdoses occur, um, in the community. So, it's a HIPAA, it's, it's, uh, not a HIPAA violation, because it's just aggregate data. It just shows a general location of, of where these things occur. But it gives us the ability to, um, you know, uh, change how we respond or how we respond with law enforcement, that kind of thing. And so, it's three different agreements, uh, but they're all to basically do that same thing.
So, it really has nothing to do with the Washington-Baltimore area?
No.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Sean, as, this isn't the first year you've done this, right?
This is the first year we've done it, yeah.
Okay.
They approached us, uh, last year, and initially, they wanted us to pay for the interface with the SO. And, uh, we just, uh, couldn't afford the, 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 uh, build out of the API. And so, they procured a grant, and, and since they have a grant, we can do this, but it makes a lot of sense.
So, last year, wouldn't it have over a hundred overdoses?
Uh, yeah, opiate overdoses, we, it was somewhere between seventy and a hundred.
Yeah.
Um, we haven't seen a lot in our data, but I think one thing to be mindful of is that you can now go to a pharmacy and get Narcan over the counter. And so, some of these patients that are overdosing, you know, uh, somebody with them may administer Narcan, and they never call nine-one-one. Narcan is a medication that reverses opiate overdoses. And, um, so that may be occurring. I, you know, it's, it's always been a, a, the difficult thing to point to just one piece of data. I think it takes law enforcement data, our data, hospital data, and mental health provider data to really get a, a good look, uh, good look at what the, the total picture really is.
Now, it's moving again to fentanyl.
Yeah.
You know, so that could be a different population.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it'll be interesting to track this
Yeah.
Over the years and see if it gives us any data that can help us react better.
Does, uh, does that Narcan stuff work with fentanyl?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, it does work. Uh, you know, fentanyl is, uh, you know, in the pharmaceutical grade fentanyl is a thousand times more potent than morphine. So, you know, we're giving, we actually give fentanyl in the field, um, for pain control, but it's a very controlled dose. Uh, and we give it in micrograms and, as opposed to milligrams that we give morphine in. Um, but what we're seeing is the synthetic narcotic, um, f- fentanyl that's coming from overseas is much more potent. And so, uh, you know, either it takes more Narcan to reverse it, or the reversal doesn't last as long, is what we see. So, it's a very dangerous drug for people to get their hands on.
Well, it's very dangerous, and, and, and it's not controlled when it's brought in here from China and up through Mexico. And people, and, 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 and the people don't even know what the size, that's, that's why it's killing people.
Yeah.
Anyway, well, thank you. Uh, I'll entertain a motion on the four agreements.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I'll go ahead and move to approve the four agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. Uh, is there further discussion? I'll second the motion. For the discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, you've got a legislative update for us.
Yes.
Good news, only good news.
It is good news, actually. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we went to, our GMT bill went to the Senate floor last week, got a unanimous vote on the floor. There were actually two senators that were absent, but I was actually somewhat surprised that we didn't get one no vote.
You must have done a really good job of marketing.
Well, I will say, you know, our, I've spent a lot of time down at the State House this year just trying to make sure that we've got everything in line. But I will say that, you know, the lobbyists from the Fire Chiefs Association, along with Brody and PFFI, they've done a really good job down there of making sure that they've talked to everybody. It did get a negative one rating from the Idaho Freedom Foundation, but I'm not overly concerned with that, you know.
Block around the scorecard.
It, it's a negative one. I think it's, it got that rating just because it is federal dollars. But we already get the federal dollars from Medicare and Medicaid, so it's really just getting some more of that same money that we, we're entitled to, so. But that's a, that's moving quickly. We should be in House Committee either tomorrow morning or Thursday morning. We were shooting for tomorrow. An agenda hasn't been posted.
Which committee is it?
Health and Welfare.
For the Health and Welfare.
It's, yeah, Representative Wood is the chair.
Who's gonna sponsor it in the House?
VanderWout.
VanderWout.
Yeah, yep. So he, he's been pretty helpful with that. You know, I, I don't expect the same results on the House side. I, I expect that we'll probably get a, a no vote or two over there. It's just a different body on, on that side of the legislature. But as the, our lobbyists have pointed out, it just takes fifty percent of them to get it to pass. So if it does pass, we are planning a signing ceremony with the governor. So we'll all get into our dress uniforms and go down there and, and do a, a signing ceremony with him. So big deal with the, for the state and, and I'm, I've mentioned to any senator or representative that I've been able to talk to that it's not about Ada County. It's certainly gonna help us, but it's also gonna help rural Idaho.
Yeah, statewide, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you look at that OPE report, they're the ones that really need your help. Yeah.
And it, even with this bill, that OPE report has stayed fresh in their minds throughout the session. So in fact, Phil's father, Mike McGrane, is, he ran a bill for some EMS, a grant fund to be able to kind of widen what they could use it for. For years, it's been just equipment and vehicles. And they're trying to widen that so that you can use it for equipment, vehicles, training, different, different things opposed to those two things. It did run into a little bit of a hiccup. After it made it through the House, some people up in kind of the northern part of the state have concerns that it will dilute some of the fund. But they did actually add some ARPA funds to that grant fund. So there, there's more money there to be, to be had now for, for those agencies that apply for a grant. We, we used to apply for that grant every year, twenty years ago. We never got it. And, but, you know, it makes sense. We're Ada County and we have resources that we don't have to go out and have crab, crab sales or bake sales to keep our EMS department going. Yet. I'm not above that if we have to do it. But.
Hurt an old ambulance.
So is there any more talk about making EMS services an essential government service or is that kind of gone away?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, Representative, not Representative, Sender Harris from Soda Springs is going to have that OPE report in both Senate and House Health and Welfare Committees. So I've heard talks of that from different people as we've been down presenting things. I think the big question that comes up from everybody is what would it actually do?
Yeah.
You know, I, I ran into Senator Rice in the hallway week before last and, and talked at length with him about this property tax bill shifting things to state share. He had a formula. I, I'm concerned about that one.
Yeah.
Because we've never had our funds come from sales tax.
Huge problem, yeah.
I tried to, to, to understand, you know, how do you base that first year? Is it based on what I got last year? Or is it a, a completely new formula? And I couldn't quite understand it, but it hasn't been printed yet. So I haven't actually seen the bill to, to see what it will actually would or wouldn't do.
It was one of the main discussion items at the Treasure Valley Partnership meeting yesterday and everyone sort of
Yep.
locked arms and said, we'll go over there together and have some conversations together.
Yeah.
If we need to, yeah.
So that one, that one's a, a little concerning. There's another bill that Representative Moyle put forward that takes fifty percent of your state share and then you have to reduce your property tax. So with our levy being so low, anytime I hear that kind of stuff, it makes the hair on the back of my neck stand out.
And what's, and what's not known, or what's not talked about much is that has a compounding effect. Because it reduces your, your levy by that amount.
Are you sure that's intentional?
Well, yeah. You think so?
But people have property tax relief and they don't really understand that, that it's jeopardizing the ability to keep people safe. Yeah.
Just to mention on that, because obviously we're watching it closely through the IC, but I do think, Sean and I haven't had a chance to talk, but indirectly we have. And the EMS is particularly impacted by all of these things, you know, like at the county level, we can spread that pain across the larger body. But knowing that levy's so low, it's been a pain point for EMS.
Right.
Any of these bills actually has a pretty significant impact on the EMS level because we can't share that burden.
Moyle has shared with me that he thinks that EMS should be privatized.
That's a terrible idea.
Yeah, so be prepared if we need to.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon.
Make that argument, but.
You know, when you look at the history of Ada County paramedics, Ada County EMS going back to nineteen seventy-five, the reason that it became a county service is because the two privates just called up overnight and said,
We're done.
We're done.
Yeah. Have no control.
Yeah, you don't have any control. And you, when you look at rural Idaho, no private EMS provider is gonna go into a community that has two hundred EMS calls a year. They, they can't make a profit. It doesn't make any sense, so.
Even in an urban area, though, I mean, I only know this because of my childhood, but even in an urban area, the problem is emergency calls are not profitable.
No.
It's transports, right? So all the money's made on transports, not, and so you lose what people think of when they think of EMS.
Yep.
Well, let's keep a close eye on that, on both those.
Yep.
Bills. But like I said, the Treasure Valley Partnership yesterday agreed that we need to together do something.
Yeah.
To look like one was getting legs.
Yeah, and the, the only other thing that Sender Mike Rice mentioned while, while we were speaking to him was it also eliminates the ability to do any kind of an override. You know, there's no levy anymore, but without knowing what they based that first year off of, if it's based on the seven and a half million I get now. Canyon County Paramedics gets about the same amount of money in tax dollars that we do, even though they're, they're about half the size of, of our agency. And it's just, you know, their levy is almost double ours, so that makes sense. But yeah, it's, it's tough. And so just watching things down there. But I'll be down there either tomorrow and Thursday. And then, you know, I like to go down certainly for the third reading when it gets the, the vote on the floor and be ready to, to help our Representative VanderWout to answer any questions that may come up at the last minute, but.
Gotta go to the help committee first, right?
Yeah.
Because it hasn't been, it hurts the committee.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, VanderWout is pretty smart. He can take care of it.
Yeah.
He, he knows when he needs information. You got another update on how many people you're holding for the COVID?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we're down, as of yesterday, we're at three point four a day, so that's a, a big improvement. We continue to see those numbers go down and we haven't been at that level around three since.
Last summer.
Yeah, last summer, like July of last year. So it's good news. CDC came out with new guidance yesterday on masks. And for our area, the issue isn't so much necessarily COVID, it's gonna be hospital surge, but it's more of an issue of growth than it is.
Of what?
Growth.
Oh, growth.
Because we don't have enough hospital space to, to, you know, to address the amount of growth that we've had in the area. And so I, I think that we're gonna see at the CDC level, Ada and Canyon County will stay at an orange level for a long time. So at the access level, we are having discussions about using two of those three criteria to determine when we're gonna relax some of our max mask restrictions. There's just a reality in EMS that some things probably have changed and our new normal will be, you know, aerosolizing procedures, intubating a patient. There will be some things that will require a mask moving forward. But we will have those discussions about, you know, relaxing, not wearing an N ninety-five every time that we step out of the ambulance on a call. And, you know, putting some of that discretion back on our providers to make the right decision at the right time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Have we seen a decline in the use of the monoclonal treatment facilities?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, I, I honestly don't know the answer to that question. I know a few weeks ago, they did see a decrease. And part of it was due to availability of both staff and the actual monoclonal antibody. But also with the Omicron variant, there was, one of the monoclonal antibodies wasn't as effective against the Omicron variant.
Wasn't that the Regeneron?
It was the Regeneron, yeah.
They have two others that are.
So I, I haven't heard, you know, the hospital numbers right now, they, they are still seeing some COVID admissions. But strangely enough, some of the COVID admissions are coming in, you know, somebody goes in for a hernia surgery and they test everyone and they have COVID and didn't know it. Or, you know, they were slightly sick. And so those are counted in the hospital numbers at the CDC level. And, you know, I, I, I think that's where I, we can use two of the three criteria to make a, a wise decision. And then really watch what's going on with the hospitals as we move forward, because otherwise we're gonna be in masks for a long time if we just use that guidance, so. And we're trying to coordinate with the City of Boise, like I said, our access partners, so that we're all doing things the same.
Do your people still have to get full-on PPP when they leave or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we're, we're not donning the gown right now. There's a few different procedures that we do. Like if we administer a nebulizer treatment, you know, that person's breathing in a mist, but they're also breathing out a mist and it, it's very fine. So when we're doing things like that, they'll don the full PPE, but now they're wearing an N ninety-five on every call, gloves and, and eye protection. So we, we've done away with the gowns unless they're doing something like that, so. The only other thing to note is this the first time in months that we haven't had, knock on wood, anybody out with COVID.
Oh, wow.
Or on quarantine.
Yeah.
So.
Good news.
Our strategy of, of using crisis staffing, you know, being able to bring people back a little bit earlier and, and not quarantining exposed folks, kept us. We would have been at one point during the height of the Omicron variant, I think thirty-eight people would have been out. And we couldn't have done it. The OT incentives certainly helped and, and all, you know, with some of our staffing issues, we've lost eight people so far to the fire departments. I met with a, an employee yesterday that is leaving for Lifelight Network to go be a flight medic. I heard yesterday that we're gonna lose one more to Starfire and potentially three to Caldwell Fire, so. It's a big issue with people trying to go to the fire departments, but I think they look towards the future and they don't see the ability for me to pay them what HR says we should be paying them. That's just the truth. I can either expand or I can pay people more, but I can't do both given our current structure.
We need to have some serious conversations. You know, paying people fifteen dollars an hour are the same, you know, that you're paying McDonald's, you know, a burger for someone to save some of his life. It's just ridiculous. It is just so ridiculous.
Our starting EMT salary is thirteen seventy-nine an hour right now.
We've got a lot of change in that.
She was here to talk about our.
Billing?
Billing the contract that with, with, we're gonna do some things a little bit different of having Wakefield work some of our older schedules. But, you know, Linda's folks in the billing office start out at under fifteen dollars an hour right now to fourteen seventy-nine. So we're gonna try to address that through budget. But I've got a, a request in Epic looking at, at some different models that we can use to address both the growth in the county and pay at the same time with the resources we have now. GMT will bring in additional dollars to the system and to our department, but we won't know exactly what that is. We have, have a projection that, that it'll be seven to eight million dollars for the system, one and a half to two million dollars for our agency alone. I think that's very conservative. I think it's gonna come in a couple million to two to three million dollars higher than that. So that's gonna be a help, but it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't address the.
Does the bill have an emergency clause?
I was just gonna ask that, yeah, okay.
It does, yeah.
It'll be, so it starts as soon as the governor signs it.
And that, the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association, which we're a member of that association, they've hired a consultant agency that has helped us through this whole process of, of bringing this aside, Idaho. But they will actually help state Medicaid draft the state plan amendment to send off. So that should be a big help for them. And once that is submitted, we get to backdate the payments to the beginning of the quarter that that was submitted on. So if they get it done before May, we would get backdated payments all the way to today.
So does that go through Health and Welfare certification process, Medicaid certification to do the state amendment plan? You probably need to talk to the new supervisor over there.
We have, yep.
Okay, because they've had major technology issues and they haven't been able to get anything a lot through in the last year and a half.
Yikes. Yeah, we, we've met with, with her a few times now and she's supportive of the idea. She will need one FTE for the program. The, the GMT money will pay for, directly for half of that FTE. And then a small percentage will come off every participating agency in Idaho to pay for the other part of the share. It's a, they're estimating fifty-six thousand dollars for the FTE.
Yeah, just a caveat, we've been regions, the, it's a region for, anyway, it's, it's one of the associations, the groups, been trying to get Allenbaugh House.
Oh, right.
Certified for, and it's been almost two years. And it's getting stuck because of the technology apparently over there.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that'll affect us. I know, you know, this is really just submitting a state plan amendment to CMS at the federal level. So they didn't indicate that that would take or that would cause any problems. They, we were still looking at nine to twelve months from the date that state plan is submitted until it's approved and, and we start receiving funds from it.
Good. Anything else?
No, sir. That's it.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate all your hard work and effort for the BF County. Welcome to our meeting. Thanks for being here with us.
Yeah, we didn't get to talk about billing much, but.
It's okay, I'm ready in case.
Everything's going okay?
Yeah.
I'm taking it, okay. Great.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Well, unless there's more business, we'll be in adjournment.
All right.
Thank you.